I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Atmos College District. Trustees present tonight are Mr. Eduardo Campidano, Mr. Chester Gonzalez, Ms. Adela Garza, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Rene Torres, Ms. Rosemary Britlove, and Dr. Juliet Garcia. President. At this time, I'll call on Herb Downing to our Vice President for Economic Development and Community Service to make an announcement.
... so I can do all this. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President Garcia, it's my pleasure to introduce Dan Bernard as the first Director of the Arts Center for the University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas Atmos College. We were looking for somebody to direct and manage our state-of-the-art performance facility in its main hall that will accommodate a variety of cultural productions from orchestras to plays and musicals. We were looking for someone who could develop an advisory committee from students, faculty, and our community to offer ongoing input on programming at the Arts Center. Dan Bernard has the distinction of being highly qualified in both the academic and business side of the performing arts. He has a doctorate in music composition from the University of Kansas and has taught at the collegiate level for 19 years. But he also has a decade of experience as an arts presenter. As Director of Music at Noon, a high-profile chamber music series on the campus of Penn State Baron, he received national recognition for that program. Dr. Bernard is coming to us from Dakota Wesleyan University where he was, where he served as Chairman of the Music Department since 1997. We felt Dr. Bernard to be well-qualified to develop this important facility to its fullest potential for the university and the community. Dr. Bernard? Welcome.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of comments, but I do want to acknowledge my excitement at being here. I love the Center. I told my wife, "This is the first job I've ever had where I can't wait to get out of the bed in the morning." And that is, that's a big deal. I've enjoyed meeting many of the faculty and staff here, and I look forward to meeting you more as we go. I hope you're all going to come on Monday, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. I want to tell you, Dr. Robles really wanted your job, but we told him...
I was practicing...
I'll be honest, I wanted your job too, but they told me I wasn't qualified.
I was practicing piano lessons.
You do have a great job, and anything we can do to help you, we're here for you. So, welcome, and I'm sorry for the cold weather. I know this is much colder than you used to in North Dakota. At this time, I'll call on Dr. Charles Damrin, Vice President for Academic Affairs, to make the introduction for our Board briefing. Nope, I'm getting a no. I read the wrong word. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President Garcia. Pleased to introduce our Dean of the College of Education, Miguel Escotet, who will provide an update on recent activities in that college. Dr. Escotet?
That's what I was supposed to say.
ladies and gentlemen. First of all, my apologies if I do not accomplish my task in these short 15 minutes, as precise as I would like to, but I can briefly share with you some central achievements and needs based on this year and a half since I became the Dean of the College of Education. In order to carry out this task, I am dividing this report in three dimensions. The first one, an organizational and administrative dimension to facilitate undertaking the mission of the college. On the second, a human dimension to engage students, faculty, and staff in the teaching and learning process. And three, a delivery system and program dimension to promote academic excellence, innovative practices, and integrity. But before I report on these three dimensions, I want just to recall on our three-four college mission to put this update report in context. The first statement in the college education mission is to prepare highly skilled professionals to assume roles and positions in teaching, research, educational leadership, and human development. The second is to provide undergraduate and graduate programs based on proven best practices, knowledge acquisition, reflective inquiry, critical thinking, and respect for the cultural and linguistically diverse learner. And third, to continuously develop a dynamic local, state, national, and international dimension that promotes innovations and contributes to scientific, educational, economic, and social change. So the first dimension is oriented to help successfully getting the approval of the college faculty, UTB TSE, UT System, and Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, in changing the name of the School of Education to College of Education, not as a cosmetic change. This reflects changes not only as a professional entity, but also as a scholarly-oriented academic structure, including doctoral programs. Moreover, the reorganization of the college was approved within the creation of new interdisciplinary departments without requiring additional resources. In this slide that you can see, the new departments and the academic units are composed of a combination of disciplines. Our central idea is that this organization is promoting a gestalt view, interdepartmental collaboration, faculty and staff joint appointments, and academic programs across disciplines, and not as fragmented and encapsulated units. In alignment with these changes, we develop precise norms and regulations without colliding them with existing university and UT system policies. We publish a 140-page college faculty policies and procedures manual. We reorganize faculty differentiated assignments and overloads based on previous year outcomes. We establish besides office hours every Wednesday, a four-hour faculty-college-wide presence for building collegiality, in-service programs, faculty development, and case accreditation activities, department and service committees, and other activities. We also developed and published our first college student handbook comprising of all UTB TSE regulations, all education student policies, academic standards, advising, and primarily all issues and guidelines on student teaching. We developed a bilingual website from scratch with more than 600 webpages, fully in English and Spanish, which includes all areas from recruitment information, academic programs, and activities, up to multimedia and interactive online activities that we plan to be in constant The second dimension involves, of course, students, faculty, and staff. Students are our first priority, of course. Our student population in undergraduate and graduate courses has been stable during these years. We have at this moment 3,200 total students enrolled in education classes, 1,631 lower level, 931 upper level, and 638 graduates. In terms of undergraduate/graduate semester credit hours, we have increased 2,000 semester credit hours over the past three years. Undergraduate students that are pursuing teaching as a profession must file a formal application, as you know, for admission into the teacher education program. All lower-division classes must be passed with a grade point average of at least 2.5, and all basic skill tests must be successfully completed in order to meet the standards established by the state. For the past four years, UTB TSE has graduated a total of 1,106 student teachers, with 58% being at the elementary level, bilingual ESL, and the remaining 42% for teaching secondary education in disciplines of liberal arts and math and science. And this is very important to state that 99.5% of the student teachers successfully complete the program. Faculty has been also a priority for reaching high academic standards. We initiated a strategic plan to increase full-time faculty and reduce adjunct faculty using existing resources to become compliant with the encaded standards. In just one year, we have been able, with internal policies, to reduce adjunct faculty from 53 to 43 persons, and to increase tenure-track faculty at the same time that we decrease full-time, non-tenure-track faculty. However, it is a need to continue to reduce this proportion and increase full-time faculty to improve our quality instruction and to confront program development and new educational challenges. A visiting scholar program for national and international researchers and professors was established this year. I am proud to announce today that we have two of these scholars starting this spring. One, a renowned professor from Spain, Dr. Santos Rego, who was the Vice President of the University of Santiago de Compostela, a famous author and research specialist in intercultural and bilingual studies, who will be with us during this semester. He is already here. He just arrived two days ago. And Dr. Yang, a Chinese researcher in education information technology for the whole 2010 year. Both faculty are financed by their respective governments. We don't really, we only contribute with the facilities of their offices and their academic support. Our faculty has been also very productive in scholarly work. In just two years, we have exceeded some of the research and scholarly production goals. Our faculty published 72 articles in reference journals, five new books, 37 book chapters, handbook entries, and conference proceedings, three monographs, and wrote and submitted 26 research and instructional grants. Also, they have been professionally and scholarly recognized regionally, nationally, and internationally in multiple occasions in the past 18 months, as you can see in this slide. The third dimension has to do with one of, is the reason of our college and the reason of the university, a delivery system and program dimension to promote academic excellence, innovative practices, and of course, a sense of ethics in the profession and personally. Our present offers is comprised of a wide range of certificates and degree programs. We have 43 undergraduate and graduate teacher education certificate areas, 15 master programs and a doctoral degree. A total of 30 certifications are currently available for undergraduate and graduate students. An additional 13 certifications are offered for students enrolled in the post-baccalaureate alternative certification programs. In the very, in the very near future, we are planning to offer a new bachelor's degree in early childhood and a master's degree in school psychology, not licensed psychologist. Our doctoral program has profoundly grown in scope and students. In academic year 2008, 2009, we offer only one doctoral specialty in bilingual studies. Today, we are offering four. In addition to bilingual studies, we offer literacy, early childhood, and educational leadership. If approved, two more specialties will be initiated next year: educational technology and higher education teaching. We anticipate already 50 doctoral students in the program. We are also exploring, as a joint effort with the College of Liberal Arts, to plan and offer a PhD emphasizing intercultural studies in both areas of knowledge. We also initiated this year a special education community clinic as an assessment clinic with major emphasis in autistic children. This clinic, made with our own resources, is not only a first magnitude instructional tool for our special education graduate programs, but also a major service to the community. It is the only assessment clinic in South Texas. One of the gems of the college, of course, is the recently expanded facility for the Center of Early Childhood Studies, which has been opened just a few days ago, the February 1st. The new Center for Early Childhood Studies will be used to provide community children with outstanding care and enhance opportunities for educational development in one of the most critical and relevant areas worldwide. Current and up-to-date curriculum and teaching techniques and strategies are being implemented. University students at both the graduate and undergraduate levels will be afforded opportunities to observe and have hands-on experience in putting into practice the ideas and concepts that they are being taught in their university classes. In addition, faculty and graduate students will be able to develop, design, and implement research studies related to areas of importance in early childhood education, such as growth and development, language acquisition, affective learning, cognitive stimulation, psychomotor development, and other areas as they become evident and needed. But besides our teaching and scholarly achievements, our college has been also extremely proficient in attracting external funds. As you can see, in the last six years, we were awarded $17.1 million, and for the current year, $4.3 million has been received, and we have pending an additional $2.3 million under review for research at these last amounts. We initiated major advances in getting state and national accreditation. We just have been notified by the Texas Education Agency that all of our 43 teacher education certificate programs have been reaccredited. And this implies that first, successfully met the standards for the Texas Education Agency five-year renewal accreditation site visit. Second, all of our 43 teacher education undergraduate and graduate programs were reaccredited by the state education agency. And three, the ECE certification program were approved by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and the TEA Texas Education Agency. The teaching certification pass rate for our students has been oscillated in the last year, in the last year, I'm sorry, between 94 and 98, and we have had 100% rate in 11 areas of study, as you can see in this slide. Finally, the past year, we initiated the process for getting national accreditation through the National Council for Accreditation in Teacher Education, the only one that has national accreditation in the United States. The process requires passing successfully four stages: application, pre-candidacy, candidacy, and accreditation. We currently are in the second stage, and we will initiate next year the third stage. In summary, you can see that many significant changes have taken place in our college, in all dimensions, and at both the undergraduate and graduate levels. These changes are designed to help our faculty better prepare our students to be outstanding classroom teachers, school counselors, school administrators, and professionals in concurrent areas. We carry out this task with the great cooperation of other colleges and schools from our institution. And last, but no the least, we scholarly contribute to the interrelated fields of education and give to the community in such a crucial, demanding, and development area. Thank you very much, and you can ask me any questions.
Dr. Torres? Yeah. Dr. Escotet, I really wanted, I'd asked Dr. Garcia to, to come here this evening and to present what this school has done. I can, you know, my personal experience with this department started in 1979, and I think Dr. ... where is it? Dr. Brogdon, you know, was in the search committee that hired me. I don't know whether that's good or bad, but I can say that the evolution of this department has gone through, and what the department and the school now has done is tremendous work. Certainly, the Education Department is the foundation of this institution. You see the numbers, you know, see over 3,000 students enrolled in the School of Education. I mean, this is, this is the rock of this institution. And all the passing rate of, you know, student teachers and the people in the Education Department, we were struggling, Dr. Brogdon, remember, at 60-something percent back in 1979. We've gone from that, you know, to 94, 98% passing rate. That's tremendous. And the amount of money that you brought in, you know, the 4 million, the 5 million, or whatever it is, and the amount of graduates in bilingual ed, in special ed, and all the other areas, and then, you know, it's a tremendous amount of work that you've done. But my question is about faculty and how we can continue to be successful and maintain that kind of standard if we don't have enough full-time faculty to deal with now and the future, the workload part of it, the compensation for the faculty, the publication part of the faculty. And I know that's always very difficult, as it is right now, you know, where our faculty is one of the lowest paid in the system. How can we make that better? Well, that's for us to discuss and have dialogue over. But can you tell me something about the workload of the professor and how that, how you work that as far as who teaches four and four, who teaches five and five, who does research, who doesn't research, who doesn't do research?
Okay. We implemented this year, well, first of all, I need to say that it's true, we need to have more full-time faculty, even though that, you know, it's always in a clinical instructional model, it's always good to have practitioners. Practitioners that of course are first quality. And not only reducing adjunct faculty is an issue, it's also rotating the adjunct faculty. We need to have new faculty, new adjunct faculty that have the base, you know, of the school system right now, what is going on in the school. So one of the criteria that they are using today, for example, for accreditation, is that if you have adjunct faculty, you need to rotate them in such a way that they know, know they can help our students in dealing with, you know, the present situation in the schools. But the proportion that is established normally is never to have more than 30% in the field of education. We have more than 30%, so we need to reduce that amount, you know, to an appropriate amount, which has been reducing, you know, as you can see, you know, the percentage now is 28% of adjunct faculty and the rest of full-time faculty. But the loads, the loads in our college is for all of the undergraduate courses, four courses every semester, and for graduate courses, three courses every semester.
Are they expected to do research? They teach four and four, or three and three. Are they expected to publish every year? Is that a question?
Yeah. Also, a dean is, you know, needs to do research, in the sense that, you know, I think that we, we, I think, and they are doing it, you know. Of course, they need more differentiated assignments, you know, when they have a true research agenda. But, you know, interestingly enough, right now, the most engaged faculty, you know, in research is the faculty that stays more time in their offices, working, you know, attending students, you know. It's, it's generally, you know, the ratios are very dangerous, you know. It's more going into the content than the container. So to me, we, we, you know, one of the things that I have been introducing was to increase loads, believe it or not, and this is why we were capable of reducing adjunct faculty. Because when I came, we have, in some cases, well, maybe instead of teaching the full load, they were teaching less, you know, less courses, but without research productivity. Not all, you know, only few. But, you know, you only need to have few to change the proportion and the relation. So we, we, you know, we managed to give some, some type of rewards. For example, this year, we are going to have the College of Education Award Teaching with $5,000. Next year, we are going to have the Research Award Teaching, the Research or the Award, you know, of the College of Education. And the following year, we are going to have the Service Award. All with, you know, our, with the money that is produced in off-campus courses, which is another, you know, element that we have been introduced. For what purpose? To stimulate faculty to do research. And of course, the, the, you know, I, generally, we need to do this on individual basis, you know. We cannot generalize. know, we cannot generalize. My, you know, I think that you are totally right, you know, that, you know, in many, many cases, we have many faculty that have a lot of workload, and sometimes other faculty do not have. And this is, one of the things is that it's not equity. And, you know, we need to be in such a way that we can have all of the faculty based on equal situation. We have a faculty handbook that, you know, establishes every single aspect that was developed by the faculty, you know, was a committee from the faculty, you know, we sent to the faculty several times, and of course, somebody needs to make decisions, and I made the decision once, you know, it was developed, consulted, you know, I talked to my colleagues, and, you know, and we put this in practice. It establishes the loads, how they can have differentiated assignments, how, you know, they need to establish a reputation in terms of mentoring and advising students. This is one of the major problems that we need to reinforce in the future. You know, I want to have the faculty more engaged in advising and mentoring students because the classroom is not only the load, it's more important sometimes what is going on outside of the classroom than the classroom itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Esposito. The next item on the agenda is, we have another briefing, and I'll call on Mr. Ben Reyna, Special Assistant to the Provost for Federal Relations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Trustees, Madam President. The Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority has been conducting numerous presentations to organizations and community groups regarding the West Parkway Project. This evening, I'm delighted to introduce a good friend and the Assistant Coordinator for the Authority that will make the presentation, that's Mr. David Garcia. He will also introduce other presenters and other members of the Authority that are here this evening with us. Mr. Garcia, welcome to your campus.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Garcia. It's good to be here this evening with everybody as an alum. Joining me today is one of our board members, Ruben Gallegos Jr., and our General Engineering Consultant staff, Richard Riedings and Greg Garcia. On behalf of the RMA, we are here today to give you a presentation on the West Parkway Project. It is one of several transportation projects that we are working on in the Cameron County area. Our purpose here today is to share with you some background on the RMA, the current development stages of this project, and also provide some information on the purpose and need of the project. There has been lots of information from different groups regarding the West Parkway, and we felt it was best to come before you to give you the facts. Much like this university, our region is continuing to grow at a rapid pace. The student population has grown, and with it, the demand to have the proper facilities in place. And just as you have planned for the future growth of this institution, we are also working as well to properly plan for the future growth of Brownsville, Cameron County, and South Texas. In our presentation, we will discuss the mission of the RMA, the transportation network, the growth of the region, and the opportunities and benefits. And it gives me pleasure to introduce Mr. Richard Riedings, who will do the technical presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia, and I'll try to make this as brief as possible. As a nineteen seventy-four graduate of the University of Texas system, it's my pleasure to give you a little bit of history about what happened to Brownsville. As you may or may not recall, in the nineteen seventies, the population of Brownsville was about fifty-five thousand people. At that time, the population of Austin was a little over two hundred thousand people. Put that in perspective and think about what's about to happen to Brownsville over the next thirty years. The C C RMA was created to try to solve some of these growth and transportation problems and address the economic development and quality of life in this area in a very positive way. It was created in two thousand and four to provide local control. The Chairman of the Board of Directors was appointed by the Governor, and the six members of the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority are appointed by the County Commissioners. The mission is to make significant contributions to the region's quality of life by providing effective, safe, accelerated mobility improvements that will encourage economic development and job creation for South Texas. There are ten roadways currently part of the system that's being implemented by the C C RMA. The West Parkway Project is the one in the solid light blue at the center-left of the area, includes two eighty-one, east loop, west loop, West Rail Project, the South Padre Island Second Access, the outer loop, and two eighty-one, two eighty-one extension over two seventy-seven and one hundred. That represents about one point five billion dollars of projects, enough to employ every unemployed person in Cameron County. And these projects are fundable, and they are fungible, and by that means there is a way to fund these projects and put our people in Cameron County to work. Brownsville has experienced, as I mentioned, over two hundred and twenty-two percent population growth since nineteen seventy, and is expected to grow another one hundred and seventy-nine percent by twenty thirty. And this is just a straight-line math projection for everyone's interest of what happened in nineteen seventy, population fifty-five thousand, grew up to two thousand five, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, relatively a straight-line growth. Nothing has happened to change that in the last thirty years. Same thing's going to happen to you again over the next thirty years. And this is what's going to happen. Population, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two thousand five, two thousand and ten, a little over two hundred thousand, it's going to go to four hundred and seventy-five thousand people, again, just a simple straight-line projection. But we've also had outside experts, economic development growth experts determine the validity of this information, and they still have so. So by twenty thirty, less than twenty years from today, you will have over four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Back to Austin, that was the population of Austin in nineteen eighty. So population growth, access is going to be extremely important because not only are we talking about Brownsville and Cameron County, there are three and a half million people that live in the nearby area right now that come to Brownsville and the surrounding cities in the area just by this oval drawn around Mission over to just east of Brownsville. You'll see there are three and a half million people in that area by twenty forty, thirty years from now, there will be over seven million people living in that area. Traffic growth has been a problem and a challenge along the Central Boulevard area at seventy-seven eighty-three at eight oh two. Traffic has grown one hundred and one percent from nineteen ninety to two thousand and five, fifty-nine percent at Central Boulevard, South Boca Chica, from nineteen ninety to two thousand and five, and then at thirty-two forty-eight, which was a two-lane road thirty-six years ago when I graduated from UT. Thirty-six years ago, the two-lane road didn't even exist all the way through. That was the far edge of town. Now, we've had a six hundred and twenty-nine percent increase in traffic at that location. The proposal for the West Parkway is to take, make productive use of the abandoned rail corridor. As you know, the C C RMA's West Rail Project is getting underway next month. We are moving the UP railroad line from the B and M Bridge up to seventy-seven west of town. That will have a great impact on the city, will remove seventeen dangerous at-grade railroad crossings by making that move, and it will increase freight movement time, reduce the time of travel. That project and the rest of the system being proposed by C C RMA actually being under construction will reduce the freight travel time in Cameron County by one hour and eliminate those dangerous at-grade crossings. And our plan is to build a road in that location. The project will address traffic on both sides of the Rio Grande. Remember, you're going to have growth on both sides, and the, what we like to call a highway with water running called the Rio Grande, people move freely back and forth that roadway to work on both sides of the border. For the improved accessibility to downtown Brownsville and UT Brownsville, you've got to have access by twenty thirty, as I mentioned, with the traffic growth that we have right now. If you can just imagine, if you don't provide other facilities, other forms of transportation improvement, and I'm not talking about just roads, but overall transportation improvement, if you do not make those improvements, then seventy-seven will be backed up from the University of Texas at Brownsville to just north of Altonville during peak hours in the morning. That will be the line of your traffic backup. So you have to have alternate routes to make downtown Brownsville thrive and to address traffic growth. As I mentioned, the overall system, one point five billion dollars of projects will employ every person, provide a job for every unemployed person in Cameron County. This one project, West Parkway, will provide more than five thousand construction-related jobs directly and indirectly, that one project. It also presents opportunities to develop and redevelop the properties in downtown Brownsville and along this area. It reduces traffic on neighborhood streets, encourages redevelopment, improves drainage, addresses growth in the area, enhances transportation and mobility. There are funding alternatives that we have looked at for this project. One is the gas tax, which has not been, federal gas tax has not been increased since nineteen ninety-seven. Little likelihood of that being significantly increased right now. The federal system has about thirty-one percent of the money they need to sustain their existing federal system. By sustain, I mean take care of the existing system and build new capacity. Same thing with the state, state gas taxes, twenty cents per gallon set in nineteen ninety-one. Little likelihood of it being significantly increased. It would have to be increased more than three times to be able to take care of the issues that we are dealing with across the state. And the State Mobility Fund, which includes fees, collective promote vehicles, driver's license, local general obligation bonds, is another way to fund that, but that is usually paid for through a property tax, and in this area would be a property tax increase. Or toll revenue bonds, and that's paid only by those individuals that drive the roadway, and that's a process being proposed by the C C RMA to fund this facility, not on the back of taxpayers, but only those who choose to use and drive the roadway. C C RMA does not support a property tax increase, and they propose using toll revenue bonds, which can also fund other amenities like a hike-and-bike trail, walking trails, security lighting, noise walls, and other amenities. And only those drivers that use the road will pay the toll and the fee for the construction. The project is reasonable and sensible. This shows the location, again, it's along the location of the soon-to-be abandoned UP railroad line. It's approximately eight miles in length, anticipate using the hundred-foot railroad right-of-way. Most of the project is at-grade except at major intersections. There are no traffic signals on this project. In order to get some flow into downtown University of Texas Brownsville, you need a freeway-type system.
Can you go back to the other slide, the slide before that?
Yes, sir.
I'm just looking where it begins and where it ends.
Yes, sir. It begins at the B and M Bridge, and it ends just north of thirty-two forty-eight. And to give you a perspective, that is where the current flea market exists, and that's where we're also bringing across the new West Rail relocation project that will come back across at, near that location and tie into Almito, where we're also building a rail switchyard.
So, you know, I'm looking at the beginning, and people coming into the city will get on.
That's the beginning.
Right in that area, and then come into this area, into downtown Brownsville, but then what you need to also be looking at, how to expand the existing streets that we have in downtown Brownsville that will tie into us, that's all I wanted to see because from that point, then you're going to have, you know, other projects to lead other streets to come to the university or to downtown Brownsville.
Yes, sir.
So that's before you get to Maryman Road? Is that where it ends?
Yes, ma'am.
Close to your house.
Seventeen thirty-two is at this location. Just to give you an idea, that's about a mile north of where it comes in.
Richard, Avenida de las Americas, is that a new roadway?
Yes, the Avenida de las Americas, that is a new toll road that is being built by Mexico. As this railroad bridge then becomes available for roadway, road traffic only, there are no trucks that will be allowed on this roadway. It will be for passenger vehicles, and Mexico is building this toll road up to the B and M Bridge location. They are currently taking bids, our proposals on that project and several other projects.
So your funding source or sources have not been secured yet for this?
The revenue bonds for this project, for the West Parkway Project, have not been sold. This project is currently going through an environmental analysis, and as I explained, as we go through, we're looking at all of the alternatives, but this is the current preferred location for the project. Still has to complete the environmental process, the railroad has to be relocated before this road can be constructed.
Richard, do you have any engineering concepts, drawings, so we can envision how that looks?
Yes.
And how it digs into the communities?
I got some slides here.
Before you go to that question, there had been some discussions, and, I mean, forever and ever, about Sixth and Seventh Street extensions to connect and open up some of that area. Would there be any possibility, or does this parkway that were to get built would negate any Sixth and Seventh Street, you know, pass-through into tie into, I guess, what ultimately would be Mexico Boulevard? How does that impact whatever thought there may be for those either at-grade crossings or would it have to be a pass?
It does not impact that. We have looked at overpasses, and there are several design alternatives that are being considered for Sixth and Seventh Street at this time. This project has not been finally designed. We're, as I explain, as I try to explain as I go through the presentation, we're still working with all of the adjoining properties, business owners, property owners, homeowners through this area, working up the final design and the environmental process. At that time, we will make those final decisions on what Sixth and Seventh, but that is some of the preliminary alternatives that's being looked at, is improved access to Sixth and Seventh.
Now, would it be focusing on that grade, or would it be looking at a grade separation?
That area?
Yeah.
We're looking at both. We're looking at both.
What is the name of that street that where the project ends? That street that runs to five eleven?
The B and M Bridge?
No, where it ends, up at the top, right there. What's the name of that street?
There's a, yeah, the street just running to the right of?
There is no street. Actually, there is where it hooks up with.
That's the B and M, that is the B and M railroad track, and the Almito Yard is right in this location.
There's, if you go there now, it's all expressway. If you actually take the frontage road, it stops at the railroad, and you just turn around and come back, so it's not a through street on the frontage or anything.
That's what that is?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the entire project is using the existing railroad?
Yes, except, in this particular project, right at this end, next to where the existing flea market is located, there is some commercial property that would be acquired, but this project is proposed to just use the one hundred-foot UP railroad right-of-way.
Does this governmental agency, for lack of a better word, do they have any domain power to?
Yes.
To do, take property?
Yes. Let me try to move on. Again, as I said, it was eight miles in length, we're going to use the right-of-way, most projects are great, and we are going, proposing a hike-and-bike trail throughout the majority of the project and pocket parks. This is a cross-section, to answer your question earlier, some of the proposed design concepts, and we have all kinds of pictures outside that we were going to line the walls with, but it was a conflict. But you'll see where the existing railroad track is located, generally where this median is proposed to be located. is proposed to be located. We have two alternatives here. One is a planted median, four lanes, two lanes in each direction. And then, one concept here shows a, a wall about three feet high. This one shows an eight-foot or higher noise wall, shows a hike and bike trail, and increased landscaping and planting throughout the length of the project. This shows what the project would look like from the backyard of one of the adjacent property owners. As they would look out over their existing chain link fence, for example, there would be the noise wall landscaping. They would not be able to see the roadway. The majority of the property owners, not all of them, but the majority of the property owners have indicated that they would prefer a noise wall and no visibility. We've had quite a few who would like to be able to see the traffic driving up and down the street, because they've seen nothing but trains for the last 100 years.
I was going to ask, what is the tone of, of the, of the people that live along the corridor?
Sure, and I'll, I'll give you that. We've got all of their comments here. The majority of their comments are all listed. This shows you what one of the crossings might look like at West Parkway, and this happens to be Madison and Military Road intersection. You'll see the hike and bike trail, this proposed, increased landscaping, and the project design with an amenity in mind.
What was the timeline?
I'll get into that. Just a minute. In doing the environmental assessment of the project, we were also, besides purpose and need, required to look at alternatives, environmental consequences, mitigation permitting, and, and finding. We looked at three key alternatives in terms of providing improved access. One is widening and improving Central Boulevard. The other was utilizing the existing UP railroad track, which is this location. And the other alternative was one that was made at the suggestion of some of the residents in the areas to move it further to the west and come in a location like this. In terms of our assessment of that, alternative one, which was using the railroad right-of-way, it would require 32 acres. To answer your question earlier, that 32 acres is commercial property at the north end of the project where the railroad track comes under. Alternative two is to upgrade Central Boulevard. To upgrade Central Boulevard to handle that same volume of traffic would require 102 acres of right-of-way, and would displace 277, 227 residences. Alternative three, upgrade 281 and come up Alton Glor, make that connection, would require 194 acres of right-of-way, and would displace 274 people. And the other alternative that we're looking at, obviously, is a no-build. Don't do anything. Since the first public meeting held in 2008, we've had over 45 meetings with neighborhood organizations, community groups. We've gathered input from over 500 stakeholders on one-on-one meetings on the project. We've heard concerns about impacts on residential properties, the impacts on proposed improvements, job, jobs, economy, growth, preference of green areas such as parks and hike and bike trails, project impacts on historical value of the neighborhood. Again, that's part of the environmental process that has to be completed. Project impacts on noise levels and community cohesion, concerns about safety and increases in crime, property taxes being raised, concerns about that, concerns about additional overpasses have been requested, keeping stakeholders in the loop on the project. As a result of these public involvement efforts, and this is really important, because when we first started this project, there was a lot of questions and a lot of concern. We sent out about 17, 1,750 requests to individuals living adjacent to the project, asking them to come to public meetings, asking them to let us come to their house, explain the project to them. At the end of the second public meeting, we completed the survey, and the public comments were 59% in support of the project, 17% against the project, and 24% neutral. These are, again, primarily the property owners who live adjacent to the project. We asked them, what could we do to make this a better project? They say add more lighting and police, add landscaping, better drainage, better sidewalks, pave the streets, add a hike and bike trail, complete construction quickly, add noise walls, don't add noise walls, ensure the project's environmentally friendly, restrict truck traffic, and add more parking downtown. Other comments were, well, just make it a regular city road. Make sure the construction and jobs go to Brownsville, or build a road someplace else, or don't build it at all. As a result of this, we are currently doing the preliminary schematic design of the project, committed to adding the bicycle and pedestrian facilities, committed to providing landscaping and aesthetics, committed to providing lighting at underpasses, coordination concerning sound wall locations, various design modifications such as ramp locations and bridges. Overpasses have been requested and committed to meet stakeholders involved. And then I was going to stop and answer any questions you might have, or say that our desire here, as part of this process, we anticipate having a public hearing in the summer of this year. And as a part of that, we're trying to get all the input we can from everyone about the project, answer their questions, seeking their support and their suggestions for how to improve the project, and that's why we're here. Yes, sir.
If, if the assumption is that this is going to be a toll road, how will the tolls be collected?
Electronically. Through a text tag, this electronic toll tag that sticks on your windshield. You put $20 in your account, that's your money. If you drive on a toll road anywhere in Texas, they deduct the toll electronically, so you have no toll booth, you don't have to stop or slow down on the project.
Is there any cost for that Texas tag deal?
There's no cost currently for those, and I encourage you, get a text tag now, because you don't have to pay anything for the tag. You can get one, stick it on your car, and any toll road you drive on in Texas, they'll deduct the toll from your, from your tag, and there's no cost today for the tag. They're talking about having a nominal fee for it sometime in the future, but right now, all you do is put up $20 of your money in your account, and anytime you drive on a toll road, they deduct the toll. If you don't like it, you want to send it back, you move to another state, you scrape the tag off, send it back to them, they send you back your $20, because that is your $20.
Can I just say, we'll get a chance to practice this later on. I believe.
Yes, sir.
Doctor, Robert has had a question on the timelines. We are working right now on the West Rail project, as Richard mentioned. That project is going to go to construction in March. It'll take about 12 to 18 months to complete. We're looking at an October 2011 operational start date for the West Rail. In concurrence with all that, we're working on this project and developing the alternatives, the environmental work, getting that project as much as close to ready as possible. So when that project goes online, the West Rail, then we'll be able to come in, hopefully work on the West Parkway in a quicker fashion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, once I get on, whether it's a B&amp;M area, beginning or at the end, it's a straight shot, there's no crossroads, there's no getting off ramps, et cetera?
There are.
They are?
Yes, sir, we have.
I, I mean, I didn't see it on the, on the map there.
Yes, sir. We do not have that, that they, major crossings, we have ramps where you can get off and access the major roadways.
They weren't marked in the, in their map.
No, but we have a design schematics that show several on and off ramps.
The straight, it looks like a straight shot from the B&amp;M Bridge to the link up on the interstate. What's the distance? I'm sorry?
About eight miles.
Eight miles.
So the West Railroad project is already decided, where it's going to go through?
Yes.
I haven't gotten a letter.
Yes, and we received the environmental permit for that project.
It's going to go through our property.
I always need you out.
I haven't gotten anything.
It's going to go right through your house.
All the property owners impacted have been notified. Any other questions?
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, and appreciate the presentation. It was very.
We appreciate your, your listening to us, and if there's any questions, any concerns, any suggestions that you all have, please let us know.
I think Ms. Garcia's going to be calling.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallegos, thank you also for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item to the agenda is the speakers to agenda items in public discussion. Max says there's no speakers, so we will then move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Torres Alos. In favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now convene into executive session. I don't believe we'll be too long, and we'll be back shortly.
Did that cover all three meetings? That motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll, I'll accept an amended motion to cover the minutes of January 12th, 21st, and we've been meeting a lot, February 2nd meeting.
A lot.
Yeah. I need an amended motion, I guess, to cover all three meetings.
Amended motion?
So moved. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Torres Alos. In favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll be right back. Now call us back into session. The is, there's nothing, there's no actions to be taken on anything that was discussed in the executive session, so I'll go to the next item, which is the Community Advisory Committee on the University of Texas Systems and Texas Southwest College Educational Partnership Agreement. I said I'm, I'm supposed to make a report. Kim, you didn't write a report for me? Yeah, I don't need a report. It was, I'm sorry, I embarrassed Kim. I didn't mean to. The, the meeting, I thought, was a big success, and probably, one of the most successful things, I thought, was just how well-attended it was, and, and the weather was miserable by valley standards, not by North Dakota standards, but by valley standards. It was pretty, pretty miserable, and, and, but we had great attendance, and I'm going to read the people who attended, because, because I'm, I'm very grateful for them. Go on, Joel Alafa, Terry Alacon, Rosie Galapsa, Mary Rose Cardenas, Ruda Escarrasco, Johnny Cavassos, Oscar Delgado, actually Johnny was absent. Oscar Delgado, Father Jerry Frank, Dr. Gallegos, Bertha Garza, Eddie Garza, Reynaldo Garza, Paula Gomez, Gigi Habed, David Hanley, Father Klein, Marturo McDonald, Dr. Medrano, David Merrill, Dr. Morgan, Joe Paredes, Paredes, Fred Rustberg, Gonzalo Salazar, Cynthia Sellers, Jim Tipton, Dr. Edward Udi, Olga Villarreal, and Dolly Zimmerman. And it was, it was well-attended. We, this is our, kind of our orientation meeting. We kind of got everybody up to speed and, and discussed the partnership and, since its inception, and then talked a little bit about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to, to accomplish. And so, the next meeting will be more of a roll-up-your-sleeves-and-get-to-work meeting, and so we are going to give them a lot more, I think, in between this, this last meeting and this next one, they'll be getting some more materials and, and so that we can have, I think, probably a much more, I'm not going to say productive, because it was very productive, but one where they'll, they'll be asked to get more input, and, but I think it went well, and, and I welcome many of my fellow board members to make a comment as well.
I think we had a great turnout last night, Mr. Chairman. It was a time to engage the community, to allow us to strengthen and further their, the, their opinions as to the direction that we should proceed on, on our partnership agreement with UTV. I was very pleased to see all the mix of individuals over there. You have teachers, you have lawyers, you have bankers, you have, you know, business people, and, and you can tell that these people were honored to have been invited, participated in this committee organization. So I think it's going to be a good mix, and we're going to have some good discussions and good ideas that we'll be able to use for our, for the rest of our mission on our, on our campus.
I think the district is very well-represented in the individuals that.
It's a good cross-section.
Geographically, as well as, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we also, what I did tell them is that, you know, they needed to take ownership of this, because at the end, they're going to be the ambassadors that are going to tell the, the community what we're about.
Good, okay. The next item on the agenda is Business Affairs Partnership Committee, and I'll call on Mr. Chester Gonzalez to make the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The BAPC, BAPC met on Monday, February the 8th, and we discussed the adoption of the resolution granting certain tax exemptions to certain historic sites under the 2010 Heritage Plan. As you know, for the past twenty-three years, City of Brownsville has requested that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution granting tax exemptions on certain historic sites under the 2010 Heritage Plan. Today we have, tonight we have Mr. Peter Goodman, the Historic District Downtown Directorship, and Mr. Joe Gavito, Historic Officer, Heritage Officer. And we're going to ask them to present their findings and other recommendations on, on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We have Mr. Peter Goodman to make a presentation, as you requested, at the Business Affairs Committee.
Thank you. President Garcia, trustees, it's an honor to be here, as always, every year, and thank you very much for having us back and inviting us, so that you folks will have the opportunity to take part with the other taxing entities in the 2010 Heritage Plan. Just to let you know, it's already been passed by the P&amp;Z, Brownsville P&amp;Z, City of Brownsville, the county, and the navigation district. So we'd certainly hope, who's more preservation-minded than the university? In this town, I don't think there's anybody, and I don't think there's, there's any doubt about that over the years, and you keep proving it every year, so thank you very much. We thought this should, we'd give you just a little bit different look, since we've never shown you any photographs of, of some of the things we've presented to you. So just so that you know how these things are being monitored, the slide that's up there now is the Etoria Bank on Elizabeth Street, and it says unblocked. What, what happens is, if a building is not, we check all these buildings. The Heritage Council has a tour once a year, plus Mr. Gavito, the Heritage Officer, and I routinely check these buildings to make sure they're being maintained properly. The, the historic tax exemption is not meant to be a gift. We understand that it costs more to maintain and ensure historic buildings, and buildings that are 80 to 100 years old, most of them. And if they're not maintained, we notify the owners that they're in danger of losing their tax exemption for the following reasons. Now, this building, I, I'm sorry, we didn't have a photograph of it the year before, when it was blocked, because the balcony was practically falling down, the shutters were all in disrepair and broken, the medallion, state medallion, which is right there, was buried in here behind a phone booth at some point. Plus, the, the entire second floor needed painting. We, well, it's, it's amazing that how quick you get the call when they get their bill from the appraisal district, and they realize that, gee, after all this time, I'm having to pay tax. Well, here's why. We already told you, and we already gave you time to fix it up, and you didn't. And so we've removed your tax exemption. If you want it back, here's what you need to do. And you don't get it back for that year, you still lose it for that year. They, they have to wait another year to get it back. Then, of course, the other, some of the other changes that we're happy to make during the year are additions. If most of you recall, with, with the building here on One Ebony and Palm Boulevard, it looked like before the new owner fixed it up and repaired a lot of it, it was in pretty bad shape. It was that pink perma stone, had no landscaping, broken windows, and I think it had been vacant, pretty much vacant since the Browns vacated it. The gentleman bought this and put a lot of hard work into it, and if anybody likes it, it's for sale. It's had it a year, it's for sale. 611 East Washington Street is interesting. It's the Milton West House, that's, that's the original owner. And what's interesting about it is, we're always particularly proud when any of the members of the entities, the taxing entities, especially city commissioners, take it upon themselves to go through the sweat and tears and bleeding of their pocketbook to renovate a building like this. This is Commissioner Tryani's new office. It's not quite open yet, but it will be. And that's right opposite the Compass Bank on Washington Street. And he actually has a solar panel to operate the, his hot water heater, that you can't see from this view. So he tried to make it as green as possible also. This is a wonderful building, an 1806 Palm Boulevard. E.G. Holliday is, is a noted architect. He's also the same architect, I believe, who did the Manitou House that belongs to Frank and Becky Costilla on Palm Boulevard. The interesting thing about this is the gentleman who owned it before, the new owner, left the house full of history. Letters, postcards, documents, unbelievable stuff. And they're still going through it to separate it, to see what goes to what museum. So we were very lucky, and we were very lucky that we found that the fellow who bought it is a very responsible party, and happens to be a contractor and architect as well. as well.
He lived behind any film or anything like that?
Excuse me?
Any film among all that stuff?
No, and actually, film, the nitrates and films don't hold up very well.
You're still looking for film over Little League days. Film of Brownsville, there were several, you know, films-
Filmed in the last seventy years.
-that were made of Brownsville in the early times, and you can't find them. Maybe somewhere in one of those old homes. Or you know what I'm looking for? Well-
Tell me.
Double Day was, was stationed here right after World War, I mean, after the Mexican War, and I was trying to find out if there was a baseball game in 1948 or something.
Wow.
If we come across anything, I'll certainly let you know. This one was now named a primary local site. It's been converted from a home that wasn't used very well and renovated, again, for an attorney's office. It's just off Washington and Palm, two blocks.
What does that mean, primary local site?
Excuse me?
What does that mean, the designation, primary local site?
Primary local site is, is actually, well, we go, the lowest designation is a secondary local site, which means it has some architectural or historical significance, but it's not really up, far, high enough to, to deserve any kind of exemption. A primary local can receive, if, if it's voted by the Heritage Council, a fifty percent exemption. People who go through the trouble of getting a state or a federal exemption on their own automatically get a hundred percent. But again, even the hundred percents can be blocked. This one is on West Washington, and it's actually across the street, and I think it was done because Javier Salinas owns a fabulous house across the street from there. He lives in Austin, came down here because he wanted a place to kick back on weekends, and did an unbelievable job of the house across the street, which I will show you next time, which it was also a state site. Did it on his own. Twenty-eight pages, I think, his application was. This is our wonderful little cemetery that nobody knew about, across from the, the Dancy Building, County Courthouse, and not much can be done with it, but the county wanted, would like, wanted it to be some kind of site, designated a site, because they wanted to put a plaque there. While nobody can use the property, and they, and they, they've landscaped it and put the fencing up, which was very nice, they want to put up a medallion, and so they wanted the recognition, so we were happy to give it to them. Okay, eighteen twelve courthouse? Nineteen twelve, excuse me, nineteen twelve courthouse?
City jail.
Jail, I'm sorry.
City jail.
I'm two blocks away. The nice thing about this building, and it, there's a, there's a domino theory that doesn't always work, and doesn't always work as well as it worked here. This is a federal site, I think, the law firm that, that did this conversion, if you haven't been in this building, you need to go. It's, you can't find a better adaptive reuse of a building than the way that they did it. And they also, the nice thing about it, aside from the fantastic job they did inside, is the photographs that they've got on their walls of what it looked like when they obtained the building. I mean, just to stand there and look at those, and what they've done is, is absolutely incredible. And, and it also shows that jailhouse doors make wonderful cocktail tables, because that's what they did with the, with some of the doors. But here we are with a, with a building that was really in disrepair, they spent over a million dollars to do it, and it's a federal site, so it does get a hundred percent exemption. Now, here's the nice part for everybody. The nice part is, this is a little studio that I believe they use for depositions. Well, they enlarged that studio. Let me tell you this story in three little pieces. When they enlarged that studio, which they wouldn't have done had they not renovated that building, there's another building as part of their complex, which is their annex. Just to give you an example, the annex, before it was enlarged and, and redone, the building that you're looking at there, was valued by the county at seventy-eight thousand dollars. It went to, what you're looking at now is three hundred and twenty-four thousand valued by the county. So we're talking nickels and dimes here, but just the university's little nickel and dime share more than you get, which is a kickback sort of from, from the jail, because it's not, would not have been done had the law firm not done the jail, you went from a hundred and twenty-six dollars that you got before that building was renovated to five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Just your share, so, you know, and then, then, of course, to the county Navigation District and the city. This was a vacant lot. It's right in between the jail and, and the Brownsville Herald Building, across the street from the Brownsville Herald Building. It was a vacant lot valued at twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-nine, excuse me. When that was built, and the folks that came in to talk to us about building it, they would not have built it had those other buildings not been very active and had a lot of traffic around them, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So just from, just the, the, the residue and the, the result of what happened at the jail, with these three or four buildings, what the, what TSC collects went from in 2006 to eleven to nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Yes, sir?
Just clarity in my mind, these are just examples of what the restoration has led to.
Yes.
This is not to say that this house, or if you build a new house in a historic district, it's going to be eligible for historical-
That's the best part, is because this building will never get an exemption. It's, it's a new building. And the others, and the others that you saw, of course, are not primary or even secondary, they, they don't come up to the standard.
In a way, you know, what, we're talking about the eight thousand dollars that it hits us this year, you're going to get it back in untold ways by the other development that occurs as a result of that group.
Oh, yeah, because you're going to get it back, and, and, I mean, just as you know, whatever you do to your house, the Appraisal District, whether it's this year, next year, or three years from now, they're going to get you.
I don't know, I think they do it every year.
That's Al Rose's wonderful building, bless Al, who, he and his wife Nana, while she was still around, live in that, in that building, and also run their, their business out of that building on 13th Street, between Levy and Elizabeth. And that's Mark Clark's 409 Gallery, right across the street, and in mid-development. One of the reasons Mark did it was because he saw the gem and said, this is a great place to do something, and since the other building looks so much like it, you know, I can, I can kind of not copy it, because Mark dug through the history and got back to exactly where, you know, original drawings, original photographs, everything he could find is fabulous, with, with that sort of thing. The 409 Gallery, if you haven't been there, obviously, they have a new art show that opens every month. They have something called Noche de Peña, every Sunday night at six o'clock, and they have a pretty good following of anywhere from fifty to eighty to ninety people every Sunday night. Free wine, cheese, fruit, and his wife Betty makes the best cookies in town, and you can hear such groups as La Misión, Clay Moore plays there regularly. So it's, it's become a gathering place for artists, for students, I, a lot of your professors, I won't name them, show up there Sunday nights, you can find them there Sunday nights, and it's a real, it's, it's a real medley of, it's a slice of the community, and it's, God willing, I, it's a slice, I wish we had ten more places like Mark's in downtown. So it's not just what he did for the renovation, it's actually what he's done for this city, by opening it up to the public and having everybody come in and enjoy it as much as he and his wife Betty do. And so these are the reasons that we're asking for your support, again, for the twenty-fourth year, to approve the plan, and it looks nice even at night, and so there is activity downtown at night, if you're at the 409 Gallery on Sunday nights. Any questions?
And just to repeat what Mr. Campidano said, if approved, the financial implication of this exemption to the district would be the sum of eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents of tax foregone for forty-five properties. So the committee recommends that I move to adopt the resolution granting certain tax exemptions to certain historic sites under the 2010 Heritage Plan as presented.
Been moved by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Campidano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item that the BAPC Committee considered was to approve a contract for the election of May 8th of this year. As you recall, the Board approved back on January 21 to, for staff to negotiate a contract with the Cameron County Elections Administrator to conduct the elections on May, and so the cost for the election contract is the sum of mighty thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, as presented. Committee recommends that I move to approve the contract for that set amount, and to authorize the district's election agent to execute the contract.
Been moved by Mr. Gonzalez and seconded by Ms. Galapsa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third item that we consider, Mr. Chairman, is the approval of a contract with CAS Companies under a TIPS contract for the construction of a new retaining wall along the Resaca Bank at the housing zone. The, this would be a cost estimate for the replacement of a retaining wall along the former Resaca Club property. The proposal is to construct a wood retaining wall as per campus standard design and specifications. The proposal includes removal and disposal of the existing retaining wall, construction of a new retaining wall, and backfill material, and the cost on the, for this project would be the sum of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars even. And I know we've discussed this, Mr. Rudos, do you have any other questions to this?
No, all questions were answered. Thank you very much.
The committee recommends that I approve to authorize a contract with CAS Companies in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, to authorize the system VP for planning and construction to execute the contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Gonzalez and seconded by Ms. Breedlove to approve the contract in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report, and I'll call on Mr. Eduardo Campidano to give that report.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the trustees, the Audit Committee met on Tuesday, the first of February. Committee members present were Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Torres, and myself. Also present were Dr. Garcia, Dr. Ardebe, Veronica Mendez, Rosemary Martinez, Melba Sanchez, Doug Army, Norma Ramos, and René Sayas. The first item discussed was the Audit Committee Bylaws. The committee discussed and reviewed changes to the original draft of the bylaws. Committee members requested that Article Four on the, which essentially was the meetings by staff and legal counsel to ensure compliance with open meetings, be looked at. The committee approved the bylaws pending changes upon review by legal counsel. You should have gotten copies of those bylaws in the event. I, I think it's still important for y'all to look at them and provide comments, so pending that, I, I would recommend that we table this item, so y'all have ample opportunity to review the bylaws. I would also note that, well, I, I do believe that there should be some reference in the bylaws as it relates to the current auditing process that is in place with the UTB system, and then somehow or other, then, I guess, we can let the, the wordsmithing occur, where the Audit Committee will have the ability to interact with the, the internal audit team on matters pertaining to both the partnership and matters pertaining to TSC. I, I think that would be very helpful. The next item we discussed was a selection of the internal auditors for a fiscal year 2010 audit. Ms. Sanchez reminded the committee that the district has the option to issue requests for proposals or select a firm to conduct the audit services for the coming year on a basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications. The committee recommended that the district issue a request for proposal and conduct the audit service for FY 2010. The reason we did that is, if you will recall, when we went out for proposals, the last time we said that we would do it for three years, well, in effect, the audit that just completed was the third year of that, so we felt in keeping with what our intentions were, to go ahead and seek proposals for the internal audit for fiscal year 2010 and perhaps more years going forward. The next item was a presentation from Ms. Norma Ramos, Director of Internal Audits. Ms. Ramos reported to the committee about the Office of Internal Audits. She explained that the goal is to help UTB TSC accomplish its mission in learning, research, continuing education, and public service by the following: providing independent, objective assurance, and consulting services designed to add value and improve the university's operations, and bring a systematic, disciplined approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management, control, and governance processes. Ms. Ramos informed the TSC Audit Committee of the UTB Internal Audit Committee membership and its reporting relationships. The UTB Internal Audit Committee provides services such as performing audits, consulting, training, and conducting investigations. Ms. Ramos addressed the annual UTB TSC Audit Plan and explained it is designed to address relevant risks and may negatively impact, that may negatively impact the university operations. It is developed by the Office of Internal Audits, using a risk-based methodology that includes only any risks of control concerns or control concerns identified by management, business, and industry challenges and student concerns. The draft is submitted to the internal committee, the Audit Committee for review and approval in August, and subsequently sent to the UT Board of Regents for approval. The final item discussed was a presentation by Mrs. Rosemary Martinez, Vice President for Business Affairs, and René Sayas, Institutional Compliance Manager on the UTB TSC Institutional Compliance Program. Mr. Sayas explained that the Compliance Program overview is the formal effort of UTB to minimize instances of noncompliance through a permanent infrastructure that includes training, assessment, monitoring, and reporting. I think the committee had a good dialogue. I think we learned quite a bit from Ms. Ramos's presentation and Mr. Sayas's presentation. It certainly forms a great basis for this committee going forward, and so at this time, I don't know if Mr. Gonzalez or Mr. Torres has anything to add. Pending their comments, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Campidano, and for the folks who haven't seen him, the bylaws, the proposed bylaws are at the back of the Audit Report Committee, Audit Committee Report tab in your books, and they're, they're just, they're in back there of the, the narrative that's up front, so please take those out, take a look at them and review them.
Here on the next Board Meeting's agenda for approval, so anything you put in comments now will be essentially developing the final draft for our consideration for next meeting.
The next item on the agenda is District Elections, and I'll call on Dr. Alan Ardebe, Provost, to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to consider approval of the Notice and Order of Election. As members of the Board know, the district has elections on May 8, 2010, for three trustee positions, Positions Three, Four, and Five. The Notice and Order of Election serves to notify the public that the district will conduct an election, and lists the early and regular voting sites, dates, and times. We are proposing thirty-eight polling locations for Election Day and seven early voting sites. The thirty-eight polling locations are the same as in election years 2006 and 2008. However, there is one less early voting site this year, because the Brownsville Independent School District now holds its elections in November. UTB TSC Mary Rose Cardenas Hall, South 117, will be used as both an early voting site and as an election site on Election Day. So I ask that you pass a motion to approve the Notice and Order.
It's been moved by Ms. Galapsa, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, to approve the Notice and Order of General Election, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Ardebe. Next item is the Construction Report. I'll call on Ms. Veronica Mendez to give the report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, President Garcia. Very excited to tell you what's been going on around campus in terms of construction, historic restoration work has been conducted in the Calvary Building, and it's going to be a brief presentation there of the interior work and the cabinetry work that our crews have been working on in the wing. That will be the home of the Provost Emeritus, Dr. Jose Martin, so you'll see some of the work in the cabinets that is happening inside, so soon to be completed on that wing. On January 28, we hold a special program at the Science and Technology Learning Center. We hosted a group of high school students and pre-architecture programs, and a group of students from the pre-architecture program to come and visit with Spaglaz and learn about what architects do, planning and construction, and it was a great time for us to have the kids there. They learn a lot, and we hope that this will be a program that we will then host throughout the different high schools in the area as well. And as you've probably heard and seen, the Resaca Club has been demolished, and this is a shot from the, when it was still there, and now you see it, and then, now you don't. So we have been working, cleaning up all of the debris, and with, the work continues, the easy part was tearing it down. The easy part was tearing it down.
I was looking at you over there. You're all blurry, blurry-eyed and everything. We saved your table.
Please. It will be an excellent site for future development of housing in that area. The work continues inside of the Oliveta Library, the portion that will be renovated. We continue to be on target for the fall semester opening. Some of the metal stud work is going on inside. Of course, we are ordering all of the mechanical equipment that will be coming soon, and you'll start seeing some of the development in the Oliveta Library as well. Also, as you will see, some of the site work happening outside in terms of parking lots. And, you know, we worked very hard in trying to complete this parking lot, but we had a lot of rain, so we have not, you know, we will not be able to meet our deadline. We were hoping to get it done for this Monday. But we have over 100 parking spaces that are coming along on that side.
You still have four days.
It keeps raining on us. I just wanted to mention that the Athletic Zone Project is underway. We received last week approval from the Historic Commission, the Heritage Council, for that, because we are part of the historic overlay in Los Tomates Banco. So, we continue working with the City of Brownsville, getting our permits.
The athletic field is going to appear like the Colosseum in Rome. You know, kind of preserving that architectural integrity and historic significance.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. The next and the final item on the agenda is a report from Dr. Juliet Gavcian.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is that our Scorpion baseball team has gotten off to a very good start this year. I'm sure it was because our Provost, Alan Ardebis, threw out the first ceremonial pitch. If we had known that, we would have brought you here a long time ago.
It bounced twice before it got to the hole.
He said, I said, "How did you do?" He said, "It made it to the base."
It didn't register on the jug speed gun either, so...
I heard it was a curveball.
I don't know. They found quite a bit of mud on it when they retrieved the ball. Might have been a spitter.
After our the first eight games of our season, our record is five wins and three losses. Last weekend, we swept the University of Houston-Victoria in four straight games at our field, making the first time that we have swept a team in four games since beginning play in NAIA in 2007. The last out, I'll need to...
Mr. Gonzalez, I want to tell you, that's the first time I've ever heard us cheer for a baseball team at the...
That's not true. They made the playoffs last year.
The last game of the series finished in very dramatic fashion while the Super Bowl was going on, in case you were not watching both. With the score tied 6-6 in extra innings, Junior Matt Warner hit a walk-off, two-run homerun in an exciting 8-6 victory. Now, you may ask, like we did, what is a walk-off homerun? It's when a game ends with a big hit and the losing team sadly walks off the field. It's so sad. But I'm glad it wasn't the Scorpions. We play, the next play with U of H-Victoria is in Victoria Saturday and Sunday. Our next home games begin on March 13th. We will play nine home games during spring break, so you'll have several chances to show your support and to see our baseball team in action. Our golf team also is becoming active again this spring. They will host, the, both men and women's golf teams will host the Senator Eddie Lucio Invitational Tournament, Sunday and Monday, February 21st and 22nd, at the South Padre Island Golf Club in Laguna Vista. It's the only time that our golf teams are playing at home this season. Both the men and women's teams had good fall seasons. We wish them success during the tournaments this spring. The Center for Biomedical Studies is going to present a seminar. We have outreach seminars presented by the center often. This seminar title is titled "Epilepsy, Treatment, Research, and Impact." It's going to be held on Wednesday, February 17th. The purpose of all the research that we do on this campus, as installed in our, and is described in our mission statement, is that it must focus on issues that directly affect our population, and that's very different from research universities that do a lot of basic research and research that is not applied. And so, we've asked our faculty to try and always think of how their research might be relevant to this region. We want to make sure that discoveries we make are shared with the people who could most be impacted. Speakers at this event will include two, one neurologist, Robert Lozano, by whom he's Vice President of Medical Affairs at Valley Baptist Medical Center, Emilio Carrido Sanabria, who is a MD/PhD neuroscientist that works for the university, the Department of Biology, and Eloy De La Cruz, Education Coordinator at the Epilepsy Foundation of Central and South Texas. We wanted to make sure you knew about a report that we were asked, I was asked to present to the Board of Regents, the UT System, last week in their meeting in Dallas, and it was on cost containment and what efforts we have begun on our campus to think about how to generate revenue on the one side, streamline our operations, and contain costs on the other. And there were three institutions that were asked to present before the Regents, because they felt we had made the most progress in the shortest amount of time on this issue. It was UT Austin, it was UT Dallas, and it was UT Brownsville. And so, our Provost is to be commended, and all of the folks that are working with him to do the very difficult work that they are doing, and that is to try and figure out how not to reduce services to students and serve a growing population. As you know, we have an increase in student enrollment this spring again, and at the same time that we're expecting a state in deficit going forward for the next five years. So, thank you, Dr. Ardebis, and everyone else who's involved in that project. We continue to try and make online registration more efficient for our students, but you may have heard yet again that we've had some problems, and they arise during the peak enrollment times. It is, it is, it is a lack of, right now, a lack of enough infrastructure and technology to deal with the load of connectivity that you have during a peak time during registration. Short of spending millions of dollars to try and provide that infrastructure immediately, we're looking at other ways to try and deal with that issue. We asked for a peer review site visit in March by three senior IT officers from across the state of Texas. It's often much beneficial for us to have other university IT folks or in any area come to our campus, take a look at what we're doing, and say, "Let me tell you what we've tried here," and give us some good advice. So, that peer review team will be here to help us think through how to solve this without having to spend millions of dollars right now. One of the suggestions that we have had presented to us that we're studying is staggering registration times. So, that begins to make some sense. That might alleviate that peak that comes and that surge that comes all at one time.
Then we have stagnant registrations before. Then we have it before where the seniors were registered first and juniors.
There is priority registration. Yes, sir, there is.
We don't have it now.
I don't think so. I think it all comes at one time, so we're looking at trying to do that again. You can register earlier if you are a former student, and you do not register earlier if you are a new student.
And in Austin, I know they do it seniors first, yeah.
Yeah, seniors, juniors, and then down the line.
Which makes sense, yeah.
Dr. Ardebis might be able to provide more.
Registration online, and you begin at 6:00 in the morning, and then by 9:00, it's stopped up because there's so many hits.
That's what we're trying to do with, and I will get a plan early next week from our enrollment page. We're looking at doing it by your student number, or the number you'll be able to register earlier. If you are more senior students, it kind of respects that principle. We're also looking at really pushing and marketing early registration, so that you can actually do all the steps of registration, not most of them still have to come back. So, we really think staggering some of the peaks that are there. We will still need to do something with our technology infrastructure by rolling those crossways modest rather than...
Registration is complicated. I mean, there's levels of people and servers and...
Well, I've had a moment management, and there are parts of work that I've really met on several occasions, thought they hold of all the eventualities and come up with some good suggestions.
The bottom line is, our people have done a good job. The problem that we have is lack of infrastructure.
Right. We don't have a bandwidth problem, do we?
No.
Not on this.
We have a server problem and some software issues.
It's the equipment behind the backbone that's the problem.
Yeah, so infrastructure is the biggest problem right now.
And the last item, thank you, Dr. Ardebis. The last item is to remind everybody about the concert that is going to be held on Monday, The Night of Strings. It will be a part of the inaugural year events that we are hosting at the Arts Center. Performing that night are the Skinner Strings Project, which is a group of young kids from Skinner Elementary School that will come with their strings, the Lopez High School Lowell Guitars, and our own 1 o'clock guitars and our string ensemble. And finally, our chancellor is going to be performing on the classical guitar that evening. All the proceeds of these tickets, they're $50 a ticket, all the proceeds go to support scholarships for the arts. I hope to see everybody there.
Roberto's going to play the ukulele. I'll play the jug.
Do a classic Tiny Tim.
And one more person I failed to mention, the person who will start the performance that night is Jimena Escobedo. And Jimena Escobedo is the young lady in the pink dress that you have seen on all of our promotional information for a couple of years. She'll be accompanied by her mother on the piano that evening, so please join us for a wonderful event.
Fantastic. The, we have another Community Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, 16th, and then followed by another one on the 23rd, and then we have the regular meeting, board meeting dates, and I've talked to Dr. Garcia, and we're going to, since we've had a lot of meetings lately, I think we're going to have a total of five, maybe six posted meetings in 30 days' time, and so, we'll give, maybe we'll take a break in March if we get through a lot of this work. Thank you all, and everybody have a good evening and be safe.
Happy Valentine's Day.